To the flag, United States of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Belinda Taylor?
Is her mic on, do you know?
Uh, looks like it. Belinda? Can you hear me?
Belinda Taylor, join the meeting, just for the record.
Yeah, this is Belinda.
This is what?
Belinda.
Oh, Belinda?
Uh huh, so Belinda Taylor.
Belinda Taylor. Okay. Um, review and approve the agenda, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting minutes from September twenty eighth, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
I'd like to make a correction.
Okay.
There was quite a discussion about the Town of Proctor Facebook site, and the minutes kind of breezed over. I just like make it clear that that is not our site, it's run by a private individual.
Tom, where was that?
Uh, down under open public comment.
Okay, so is that all you want, is to say that it's not managed by the Town of Proctor?
Yes, that would be great, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes with that change under open public comment, referring to the social media website?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Open public comment. Is there anybody that is on that would like to say something?
Charlotte, here's Firestone.
You're just listening?
Here comes Charlotte.
Hi, could you, oh, sorry.
Did you have something you want to say?
Uh, this is Belinda Taylor, I'm new to town, hi. Um, I just moved here from Alaska and just glad to be able to participate, so that's all, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Charlotte, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
She's got her mic muted.
Okay, I'm guessing maybe not.
Uh, didn't hook up the webcam this time, sorry, nothing to add.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Alright. No guests?
No guests.
Alright. Good stuff, does anybody have anything to add for good stuff?
Our Sacre Teens did, I thought, well at the homecoming this past weekend, and the weather was, couldn't have been any better if we ordered it.
That was beautiful for them.
You took the words out of my mouth, Tom. The kids had a great time, they were very excited, they loved the bonfire, thanks to the Proctor Fire Department too, and the, and everyone who was involved with the pep rally. They, that's all they were talking about this morning.
Good, probably felt good for them to have something fun to do, other than, you know, some of the normal things recently. Alright, anybody else? Okay, we'll move to Highway Department.
So the report is in your packet, just a couple little quick things here. John met with Steve Morris, who is the, the mason across the street working on the building, and he's gonna put a proposal together for us to, to, uh, cleaning and, and sealing of the War Memorial. That's something we put out to bid, and we didn't get any bids on that, so now we are, by law, we're able to sole source and, and ask, you know, kind of go out and ask people. Um, and so we should be seeing something here, I'm hoping in the next week or two, uh, from him, a proposal of some kind from him that we'll then take a look at and, and see where it goes. The, uh, there is a valve up on School Street that has got some issues, it's been leaking water for quite a while. The plan is to, on the sixteenth, uh, we will be out there with SOS, changing that valve out, or hopefully just repairing it, but it may need to be changed out as well. The school will be out of water on that day, but the school is out that day, which is why we planned it for, for that day. I believe that's Friday.
Yeah.
Um, that's Friday, so school is out that day, so we'll, we'll be getting that done in one day and getting everything back on. Even if it rains, we're gonna go ahead and get that done, so. And then, on Thursday, we'll be working with SOS again to take out the baffle out of the, the liner, or out of the lagoons. The baffle is, if you remember that curtain thing that we had issues with, and so, uh, we have contracted a company to come down, they actually have divers, and that's like, gotta be the worst job in the world, but they have divers that go in there and they, they unhook some stuff, and then, uh, we'll go out there with it, look at Ben's. We'll go out with our backhoe as sort of a pivot point, and they'll take that baffle out of there, and that will allow us to get full access to the liner, which will then be hopefully fixed the next week when the temperatures are warm enough. Uh, we have to have like fifty degrees or so to put that glue down, so, uh, but that'll get that thing out of the way, so we can fully see the extent of the damage and, and hopefully get that repaired next week. The rest of the-
You'll be right down there with that, won't you?
Oh yeah, yeah, and, and John'll, John'll be there as well, because he'll be on the backhoe, you know. I'm not gonna be in the water, but I'll be watching, for sure.
Can I ask a, I just have a question, so Saturday, when a Green of Day was happening, over in the park, the stand that the wreath goes on for the monument is still out, we might want to pick that up before winter.
Okay, does-
I stood it up, so you can actually see it.
It's a stand for a wreath?
Yeah, we do. Yes, we usually use it on Memorial Day, but we didn't this year, and I thought we took it in.
We used it this year.
Okay, there you go, so it needs to be taken in, so it's not here or get ruined.
And it's right here next year, to the park right here?
Yeah.
It's right in front of the monument.
Okay.
Thank you.
Nope.
They'll, they'll use it for Veterans Day also.
Okay, I just don't want to leave it out all winter.
Alright, okay. Um, so, yeah, so if there's anything else in the report here, uh, I'd be happy to answer questions, I don't want to go through it line by line, of course, but, um, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions? Hi, nothing to add? Alright, is there a motion to go into the Board of Water Commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Water fee abatement request, you guys got that in your packet?
Yep.
For Meadow Street.
Um, so, uh, Met twenty Meadow Street, if you remember, is the trailer house that had some sewage issues when we had a backup upstream of one of our main lines. So the trailer is still there, we're in the process of trying to, of, well, not we, but he isn't, he and our insurance company are in the process of negotiating a replacement. In the meantime, um, sorry. Mr. Washington, who is the owner, has asked, uh, to have his, he calls it taxes, and that's just an older term, but he has asked to have his, um, water and sewer rates, or water and sewer fees, abated, because there's no use in the trailer. There's nobody, nobody can even live in the trailer at this point, so, um, you see a letter here that talks about what he was asking for, it's sort of his formal request for abatement, if you will, and then I have also attached the, uh, the report showing what his account is currently at, he is currently, um, up to date on his past payments. Uh, the one that's due now is the one for the first quarter, uh, what he's asking for is from basically this first payment on forward until he gets some, something on that property, that, uh, that you abate his, his annual water and sewer fees. But for now, we're talking to water only, I guess. Uh, so that is basically the formal request, and it's on you to, um, you know, decide if you want to abate a piece of that, all of that, none of that. But again, it's, it's basically because there's nobody living in there, nor can anybody be in that residence at this time.
So is that all cleaned up, the over there, or?
No. They cleaned it up as best they could, but it's, it's, I don't even want to know what it looks like inside.
Right.
Um.
Because can't we, I mean, I, I've had people complain that it's it's unhealthy.
Mm-hmm.
So is it the league that's taking so long to?
It is, well, it's both. Where they're at, I don't really want to talk about it too much on here, because we're not in executive session, and it's sort of a, but they offered him a price for the trailer, he, he thinks that it's worth a lot more because of a bunch of updates and things that he put into it. So they're sort of in negotiations, the league has said, well, that's all fine and good, but, uh, to increase the, the value on this thing, we need to see evidence of those improvements. So last I knew, he was trying to get his receipts together to show them what it was truly worth. Um, the, the original agreement was for the league to pay in us, basically, uh, through our, our deductible, but to pay for the removal and a new trailer for him. And then the resetting fees, I believe, so we would basically bring in another trailer of comparable value. And right now, the argument is, what does it worth, at this point? But yet, in the meantime, the trailer sits there, and until they come to a really an agreement, I don't know that it's gonna move. Unless we get complaints, and maybe the health officer involved, and, and, I don't know, Ben, has, has the health officer been to that trailer?
Not that I know of, though.
Okay, okay. Um, I, at this point, I don't know if, if it's really a health issue, because it's, I don't know if it's really going outside of the trailer itself.
Right.
You know, uh, but as soon as we come to a resolution here, that thing will be gone, and replaced most likely with something of comparable value. Uh, but in the meantime, he's, again, he's not, he's not getting any, he's not making any money off of it, he doesn't have any tenants in it, and he's being billed full price for water and sewer, and he's asking for some sort of an abatement.
Anybody have a comment? Or feeling on this?
Seems like a reasonable request to me.
I'm not in agreement as far as an abatement forever.
No, not forever.
The way he phrases his email.
I don't see forever.
Moving forward until I can afford to spend, so he could not afford to spend anything for years.
No, I'm talking about one year.
Right, like the rest of twenty twenty?
Exactly. Yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
My only thing is, what if they do not put another trailer there? Are you asking him to call, or send something to the slackboard again, for abatement for next?
Yes, if they don't put another one in, I would think so.
Is that what we're asking? Okay. I'm okay with that.
Yeah, and, and, you know, there are some trains that have thought that would say that there are fixed costs within our water system and sewer system, and those are costs that are, that are born regardless of if you're hooked to the water and sewer system anyway, um, and if this trailer house were to, to go away and never come back, they do still have, or he does still have water and sewer available at that lot. So, uh, I think i- if you guys decide, hey, we're gonna, you know, get rid of it all at this point, and then later on down the road, if it's still, if it's been a year, and he has not put anything on it, then the discussion might need to be of, you know, does he need to pay at least a portion of it? Since the opportunity is still there to put the trailer on there, but he's still, but he's not utilizing it. But there's still a, a cost there to everyone else for those fixed costs that needs to be borne by everybody. Uh, I don't know if that answers your question, Carrie, or not, in a long-winded way, but-
It, it, it does, I just want to be clear in my mind what we're agreeing to here, and what the expectation is, and what the expectation is we're sending back to him.
Yeah, he's, he's gonna be very limited on what he can put back, um, because that is actually a, uh, the way that lot is configured and the way, because it has two properties and the where the trailer house sits, with the new zoning, it's not compliant with the zoning, so if he's, puts the same size back on the same location, it's grandfathered in, um, and it would be okay, but if he was to propose anything different, larger, or whatever, it's gonna have to go through the process, and it may not be allowed anyway. Yeah, so most logically, he's probably gonna get this new trailer from BLCT, or Passive, and put the same thing back on fairly quickly, I would imagine, because he's telling me he's losing money every day, he doesn't have a tenant, and this and that, and the other, you know, but, um, but yeah, so, I mean, if it's, if this goes longer than a year, I think there's definitely some other options that we could look at, for at least a partial payment.
Right, and I think even, I, if he doesn't come to us to revisit, I think we need to revisit, um, by the first of the year, if he hasn't made some effort, you know, as far as cleaning up and getting that out of there, um, and maybe get the health officer down there just to see how bad is this, because there's a lot of little kids all around there and stuff, and-
And just to be clear, though, the, the agreement, the original agreement that I saw from Passive to him says that Passive will get rid of the trailer.
Right.
Not him.
Right.
So, but yeah, you'd think within a year, they would have things negotiated and make it move forward on.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, so is there a motion to abate his sewer and water till, through December thirty first?
Can we do, can we do both right now, or do we have to do water now and sewer when we go into the board of sewage?
I think we should probably do one at a time, do you want to do just the next two, two period, because we got the fiscal year just started, that's where we're at now.
Right.
So, a year would be a year from July, last July, if you want to give him a year, that would be a full year, because right now, he's paid up until July first.
Okay.
Yeah, was that fully confused?
No.
So he's, July first, and what was shown here is what he owed.
His current due, yes, yes, just for the, this period we're in right now.
Which, I thought we were talking about just abating this current-
What's due now?
He's at, yeah, he's asking for, essentially, he's asking for, I think, like a year's worth. But well, he's, he actually left it sort of open-ended, and leaves it up to you to determine how long you want to do it, yeah. Now, you know, our, our water and sewer, tell me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's annual, right? It's charged annually, it's paid twice a year, but it's charged annually.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I don't know if that-
So, uh, July first of twenty one?
Okay, so what's the board's feeling, would you rather just based on what is owed now, abate that portion, and then he'd have to revisit if he got another bill and wasn't gonna pay it, or something wasn't settled with his trailer and passive?
That's what I would prefer.
So, yeah, so he's got, current due is two sixty, two fifty, uh, and I'm not sure how we're billing these out, but I'm assuming they're billed every quarter.
In your tax bill, and it tells you when they're due, so-
Months, like taxes one, sooner one month.
Right, but the total due is actually a thousand and twenty-five dollars, and that's, and that's for the year.
But that's what he-
Well, again, that's sort of the, yes, that's how I interpreted what his request was. Well, his request is really open-ended, until I get something on there.
Right.
So, uh, I don't know, maybe you wanted to, depending on how long you want to go out, maybe it could be for up to a year, or until he gets something on there, that is now, that is using water, so if it happens before that, he's not getting some additional free time.
I could live with that, yes, that's a good idea. Yeah.
So you guys are willing to abate the total due and not the current due?
So I want to do the current due.
Okay, how many want to do the current due versus total due?
I want to do the current due.
That might be a good idea, so that it doesn't accidentally drop off the table.
That's a good point, Bruce. Yes, it is, that's a good point.
And I really don't think that he's gonna be, like, a whole year waiting for this, this is gonna happen, so, and then he's going to have a tenant there, and then we're not going to have the water or sewer payment for that portion of time that the tenant's there.
Right.
Well, if we just did this one payment, and then when we go into sewer, we just did that one payment, I think that's fair.
And just know that you may see the next payment coming up, Nick, in a few months, you'll see the end, until, until it happens.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, it won't, the other one won't happen until spring.
Right.
Okay, so is that everybody's consensus to do that, current?
I'll, I'll make a motion to effect.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I mean, the operational quarters. Okay.
Okay. Simon's operational report.
Uh, same as always, uh, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or do my best to find out what exactly, uh, they are, but, uh, as far as I know, things are going well, um, no major issues.
I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they are cranking the paperwork out now.
Yeah, have we come up with a plan for that house on Goran Bridge Road, that's the delinquent?
Uh, yes, actually, um, John and I sat around, and I drew up a little sketch on how I'd like to see it done. It probably won't happen till springtime, because we're kind of losing our season here, but, uh, I can definitely sit down with you and show you sort of what we're talking about. I think we're proposing a new line, a two-inch line down Goran Bridge, the one-way road, that will tie all those other houses into it, and tie that house on the corner, so the one around the bend, actually, the, the water main, or the water line goes under the house, so the plan that we have will actually eliminate that as well, so they'll all be on the same line out front, as opposed to in the back. And that will allow us to put curb stops on them and shut people off.
Yes, I didn't want that to drop off the-
No, we've got it all drawn up, but just, gotta really, just gotta get time to do it.
Sure.
So, I have a question on the report, it says that both on Patch Street, the hydrants are now flow too low, and then it says the one on Green Square, so what's the, what's the prognosis, are we fixing those, are we waiting?
Well, if you have a hydrant that flows too low, that means it needs to be, we need to do some engineering or something and find out why. Whether, it could be, you know, the simple thing is to go out and check the valves and make sure the valves are open, that's kind of a duh, sort of thing. But if it's flowing too low, sometimes that means that there's a water break somewhere, it may, could mean that the, the pipes themselves have just sort of gone bad, that they're not the right size.
Right, so I'm asking what the plan is, did, did they share that with you?
No, no, not at all.
Can you ask them what the plan is?
Oh yeah, I can ask him what the plan is.
I, I would like to feel confident that they are going to be repaired, like, as soon as possible.
Well, so we'll have to look into it, like I said, it's not, if, if, usually a flow thing is not a hydrant, is not necessarily the meter that's bad. I'm not the meter, but the, the hydrant itself, it's something else in the system that's bad, that's causing it, could be an elevation issue, a lot of things, but let me look into it. I know we've done water studies, and we have a water model, which is where that's coming out from, is a water model, and I'll find out from our engineer what the deal is with this, and kind of what the plan is.
Yeah, that Patch Street one has been on the table, uh, for a long time, and that also is the one at the wastewater, uh, plant too.
Right, right, and I, I know they did a, a whole hydraulic model and everything, so, um, they will have been identified in there, so I'll get ahold of our engineer and find out what the issues are, and, and what they think the, the cause is, and how we fix it up.
That would be great.
Well, again, a lot of times, it's, it's something that's within the system, it's not necessarily a bad piece of, you know, a bad piece of equipment or anything, is something within the system as a whole, using an elevation issue, or, or a pipe size or something, so, I'll, I'll talk with them and find out.
Yeah, and which height, do you know which hydrant up on Green Square is bad?
No, no, I, you know, I'll get with Chris and find out if they have a list of hydrants, and, when, because when they flush these hydrants, they usually do some flow testing on them.
Right.
Uh, I'll find out, I'll get his spreadsheet and find out, um, which one it is.
Yeah, just curious.
Yeah, yeah. No, let me, let me do some research on that.
Uh, B, activities in progress, the third item. A request for service form is needed for some of these shut-offs, because the, uh, curb stop isn't in the correct location, um. This is the first time I, I've heard of that, we've been working on these for a couple of years now.
Okay.
So-
Service form is needed for services requiring more, more than a simple curb valve, or- Okay, I think that's probably talking about that same one that we just talked about. It's a delinquent account that they feel that they can't shut off, because we're adding curb stops.
Right.
Yeah, I think that'll all be taken care of with this, with, when we do this project. A request for service form, I'm not sure-
I've never heard of that before.
Yeah, I don't know why we would need that, unless that's a state form, but I've never heard that before. Uh, that's typically, that sounds like a tap, like a, a tap application sort of thing.
New service, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'll find out, I'll find out what that lingo means.
And then, can you also, I don't know if it's just me, but under activities in progress, it also says, an O and M updated draft has been submitted by DNK, the state has responded with comments and recommendations.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so that is part of the, um, the big loan that we did, the state revolving fund loan, and that's still at the state for review. So, that has been updated, as far as I know, I have to look at my folder in there, but Stan told me that, um, that, that O and M manual has been sent, those, those comments have been addressed and sent back to the state for review. Yeah, I'll, I'll double-check that, though.
That would be great.
Yep.
Anybody have anything else on the report? Alright, is there a motion to go out of water commissioners, and into the board of sewage commissioners?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, the abatement. So without discussion, you want to just move forward with the motion on the sewer to do the abatement for the current due only?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The lagoon liner repair purchase.
So, just before we get into that, um, we've had a couple of, uh, sewer insurance claims, uh, we need to figure out how we can get people to put, require them to put backflow preventers in to stop this from happening. Any, you know, if, if a new trailer does go in a Meadow Street, they should be required to have a backflow preventer, any, any service upgrades, anything like that, um.
We can do that, we, we just have to change our water, um, whatever we're, whatever we're referencing in our water specs for, um, a, an install, uh, typically, the backflow is gonna go with a new meter set, but that's not the case here, but, um, that's just simply adding, adding some language to the water ordinance, requiring those types of things.
Well, I'm not worried about the water, I'm worried about the sewer, that's what we're having issues with, that's what we're getting sued over this year several times.
So what do you mean by a sewer backflow preventer? I don't-
Something that stops the floor, the sewer from flowing back in, running the wrong way. Same thing as a water, uh.
Uh, I can look into it, I've never seen one before, honestly, because the, the water one is, is basically based off of, uh, you know, pressure and, and flow that opens up a diaphragm and lets water one way and not the other. Sewer's not under pressure, but, at all, so I don't know that they, I can look into it, and see if they make such a thing.
That's what happened up on High Street with those three, uh, houses that are on that, uh, connection up there.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll, I'll see- Okay, I'll, I'll see if they make a thing and, and...
Oh yes, they do.
Okay, so is it sort of a one-way baffle type thing that allows flow one way and then back the other, so then it would just flow into the, would back up a manhole and flow onto the road?
Yes.
Going into somebody's house?
Right.
Okay. Um, again, I think that could be as simple as putting it into our, our sewer ordinance. And, uh, we have a section for, you know, how you're supposed to install things and what we can, you guys can mandate whatever requirements you think you need, um, on the system. So that, that's simply just a language change in the ordinance, I believe.
Maybe this winter, we could take a look at that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll look, I'll look for what this, uh, the actual mechanism looks like.
Okay. So the Lagoon Liner?
Yeah, so back to the Lagoon Liner, so this is going, you know, this is the Lagoon Liner we're having to fix. This is the materials for that. Uh, there are two different invoices here, it's that hypo lawn stuff. That's the big rubber sheets that we have to put down. Um, this was a, was not, a non-budgeted expense, and it's going to be coming out of the reserve fund, so I want, just wanted to have select board approval, um, or I guess sewer commissioner approval uh, for this expenditure. We're looking at a total expenditure of $3,235, and that will be coming out of the, the reserve fund. So I would ask for your approval, um, to spend the money to, to, uh, to take the money out of the, the reserve fund for this purchase. Otherwise, if we take it out of the, the, the regular maintenance fund, it kind of blows that out of the water early in the year and, and we're kind of behind the evil.
Right.
Is there a motion to take the funds out of the reserve fund?
So moved.
Second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
That's, that's really not a bad price for the fix considering, uh, you know, the, the people, our people can do it, uh, Simon's people will do it.
Yeah, yeah, I agree, and, and there's a little bit of, uh, glue to be added to this price, but it's not much, and I actually think they got, I think they got the wrong stuff, so I think it's going to come in a little cheaper after we get the, the hypo lawn they got, I think is a little thick. Um, so they might be getting a thinner stuff, it'll be even cheaper, but um, no, we were talking about, you know, $20,000 originally, when we first saw this and thought it was going to be a big, big ordeal. And, uh, the ability to do it in-house, and I will say that SOS, they, um, they volunteered to do all this. They, and without asking for more money, uh, they volunteered to, to get in and, and fix all these patches and everything, so, so I think it'll be good.
Is there any, um, comments on the report? Questions? Answers? All right, you want to add anything else?
Uh, no.
Anything else? Anybody have a sewage? Okay, there's a motion to go out of sewage and back to the regular select board meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, standing committee reports. Does anyone have any reports for the committees around?
Uh, the Mosquito District Meeting is, uh, Thursday night, the 15th, so...
And we, um, the po, the pool and the, um, ring, I don't believe are having a meeting this month because they didn't really need one. They're kind of starting to ramp up things and stuff, but there was nothing they needed to come to the board together for.
I did, yeah. The question was asked and nobody really said much.
So, they'll probably meet next month when they'll be much busier.
The planning commission is working on, uh, a elevation restriction, any houses above a certain height, uh, need to be screened just so we don't wind up with, uh, a house on the side of the mountain sticking out like a sore thumb there. So, we're working on that.
Anyone else? All right. Hey, um, the bills. Any questions on any of the invoices? Okay, to move, go ahead and sign for them.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I can sign those tonight.
Yeah, they're right there.
Thank you. Okay, Town Office renovation, there's a change order number four and an invoice number five.
So these were already, these were already, um, calculated into that discussion we had at the last meeting. There, there was already there. Um, but this is for, um, one of these is for some electrical and some, uh, so upstairs, uh, in the meeting room, uh, we had talked about there being a substantial lack of, of plugins and data ports and things because we now, everybody's got their computers and all that, and there's, there's a need for additional, you know, electricity and everything upstairs. Um, so we took the opportunity to put in some, some plugins up there, plenty of plugins so that everybody on the select board will have one for their laptop, as well as somebody in the audience if they needed one. Um, there's also, uh, places for data or, you know, data ports, uh, for hooking to the internet, uh, so that we would have two additional workstations if we ever need them upstairs. Uh, the Listers currently use one of them, plus there's one next to them that we put in across the hall, uh, for an additional workstation if we ever needed it. Uh, as well as putting, um, fixing the one that was in the, my office because it was just a wire hanging out, so they fixed that for us. The others are just things that, uh, that we had known about. One was, uh, the wall that we had to foam an outside wall because originally it was a, there was a wall between, that was built between this, that wall and the outside wall, and there were pipes going out that would have frozen if we had not taken and foamed the other wall on the outside. I know this is confusing, but, um, so, uh, again, just things that were, you know, that were, once we got things opened up and got things moving around, things that needed to be done. Uh, the masonry repair on the foundation was just cracks and things, so once we got into the room inside and saw that the, um, behind the, the oil machine where we put the oil, uh, the tank back behind that, there were some substantial cracks in the walls, uh, that needed to be filled because they were going to just get worse and potentially become a structural issue, so, um, that's what those three change orders are, were for. Um, you know, knock on wood, this will be it, uh, but again, this was included when we were doing that analysis. Uh, we already knew these were coming, so they were all in there. Uh, so hopefully no surprises here. Um, so, that's what this is about. Uh, I am asking that you authorize me to sign this so that I can get it paid. Um, the, the next item is, is, has this included with it. Um, the invoice number five has a change order for included within it.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Since I'm the clerk of the works in this job, I'll abstain.
What'd you say, Tom?
I, I won't, I'll abstain from voting on this since I'm the clerk of the works at the, the project.
All right. Beaver Pond Dock Boat Violation Letter.
So this is a draft of a letter that we had been talking about for the, um, the boats and just the things that are on Beaver Pond that have, um, now that we found out that that is, uh, under the town's jurisdiction as full owners of that, um, the, uh, the Beaver Pond Committee had recommended that we, um, not allow those items full-time overnight on the beaches and within the, the pond, and so, um, with the select board's recommendation as well, you had asked me to put together a letter to the owners, um, asking them to remove those, and, um, here's a draft letter for your, for your review and comments, and, uh, if we're okay with this, I will put this together and send it out to the, the two, there are two addresses that I have that are currently storing things on the beach.
And this will include rafts that they have out there?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, it says, um, this includes beachside equipment as well as items within the water.
Okay, yeah.
It basically says it's allowed during open times and days, but must be removed at night, and that's, we've got posted that it's open from, you know, dawn till dusk, and those are the open hours.
Does anybody have any changes or are they okay with the letter?
I'm okay.
I'm okay.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the letter as is?
So moved.
Second?
All second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll send it out.
Okay. Town Facebook page.
So for once, I'm going to shut up on this one and let you guys talk about this one.
So Greg attached the, um, email, talking about the, uh, page. Um, no, I'm good, thank you. Um, any comments or thoughts on this? Nothing?
It, yeah, this is going to run a, a year at a time, so if we want to make changes, the...
Any changes to the site? Well, I think what, if I, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, the intent was to have somebody manage it the way that you guys wanted it, you know, portrayed from a town's perspective versus having it fall back on somebody here in the town office. Plus, if we did create another new page, this one's still going to be up there. Then we'll have that, another Proctor page, so I think, if, am I correct, Lisa, in interpreting this?
Yes.
So any thoughts on this from anybody?
How would we go about putting information on there?
I think you would just give it to Lisa. Like funnel it through her?
I think, I, I mean, Lisa, if I'm reading this correctly, you're just, you're willing to manage the Facebook page for us, and if we wanted to put things on it, or if we wanted to, to change things, it would, we'd just send you an email and you would do that for us?
Yes, and any, anything anyone has sent me, I've always uploaded and put on the site.
Right.
Well, I hope we're, right, you know, uh, Lisa, I hope we're screening these a little bit when people send stuff in.
The only thing I've uploaded and put to the site have been from select board members and from the town manager with respect to information. I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to. Other things that have been uploaded have been about sports, school, library events.
People, I didn't understand what you meant by people.
Well, if it's, I meant, I'm sorry, Judy had said Bennett asked how things would, you would get things, and I was referring to the select board and town manager.
Okay, thank you.
I, my feeling is that it, it should be specific to what is being posted on there. You know, is it something that we want homecoming on? Is it something that we want, you know, what do we want on there? There's several Proctor Facebook pages. So, I guess that's my thing. If it's, I think it should be about town business and not about everything else.
Yeah.
So I went on other municipal sites to look. This is the, um, this is one site in the town of Proctor that's an open site. Most other sites you have to ask to join. Um, I, in other sites I looked at, they're pretty inclusive of everything that's happening in their community because that is your town, and without being inclusive of school or our yard or even the library, um, I mean, that, that's what makes your town. So if you go on and look, um, at the Wallingford side or other sites, they're all very inclusive about things that are happening, um, within their community.
Any else have a comment?
It, it seems to me it leans more towards a, a, a school page than a, than a town page.
And I think that's what I'm saying. There, there are more, a, and I'm okay with inclusive, but I, I don't see a lot of business on that page, and that's what I would like to see on the town page. What is the, the business of the town? Like, hey, your water bill is due on such and such a date. You don't see anything like that hazardous waste day.
Hazardous waste day was up there. It was posted.
But it gets buried. It gets buried with all the other stuff that gets put on there every day, and I, I guess that's my thing about it, is what is it that we want it to say? If it's truly a that kind of page, what is it, and are people allowed to comment on it? Because I don't think that they should be allowed to comment on things on that page.
You can turn off commenting if you want. If you don't post something every day, you're going to lose your audience. That's what drives people to your page. Anyone that has a Facebook page will tell you that. You have to post something every single day. That's what drives to your page. Um, I pull things off the town website all the time and post, and people will have will see that, that they've never seen it on the town website, so, um, y- you're going to have to post something every day. If you look at other municipal sites, you'll see they post things every day. And there's not always town business happening every day.
I'm all for having it inclusive, and I almost think I like the idea of not being able to comment, um, just to reduce negativity, because I think you could have a good, um, post up there and it turns into something that's not even related. From some people, after a while, they chime in and it turns into a whole different argument or a whole different event. Um, I, I think, I, for what Lisa's saying, I feel like a lot of people do go there. And if there is a question on something that's posted, they can always message rather than post something. You know, like, say if you put an event for the town on there, and people are going to ask you, well, what hours or who can participate or whatever, instead of posting it, they can actually just message and get an answer back to clarify their question. Kind of like when people say recyclable and garbage day is just recyclable day, or just garbage day, so, you know, things like that.
And the message is not visible to everybody else.
Correct.
Right, okay.
Right, and I can put, um, like Greg's email on with something specific if he's asking to have it posted so that all questions go to him, Celia, um, Lisa Wright, whoever it is. Um, so questions or concerns, inquiries go directly to them. Their email would be posted with whatever their posting is.
And, but can you make the entire site devoid of, of comments?
Yeah, you can turn that off in settings.
Oh, okay. See, I, I'm showing my ignorance to Facebook here, but...
Yeah, I, I also feel that more than one person should have access to be administrator to this, to the site. I just think that that's a fair request.
Who would you recommend?
I think we would have to find somebody, Judy. I can't just throw somebody's name out there. We haven't talked to anybody about it.
Well, I know, but you've been talking, we've been talking about this for quite a while, so I didn't know if you had someone in mind.
I would like to have somebody out of this office, at least, not, not immediately, but in the future. Somebody out of this office, actually.
I, I think so too. I think that more than one person should be administrator of this site.
I agree.
Is everyone in agreement to, um, let Lisa be administrator right now until Greg also puts somebody? Is everyone in agreement to let Lisa be administrator right now until Greg also puts somebody on task with, from the office? So they can kind of tag team and leave it as an open forum for events?
I say we wait until we have somebody and then we can go from, then we can do it. That's what I think. I wanna make sure it doesn't fall through the cracks. I, I would like to see more than one administrator and I would like to wait to make that decision till we have that administrator so we can talk about what the parameters are.
So until then, we'll just keep this, this Facebook page will exist and be open and we can still add to it.
It'll be unofficial.
Yes, it'll just be unofficial. It, just as it is right now.
If, if somebody gave me a 10-minute rundown, I mean, my wife is about as Facebook as I come, so I'm sure she can teach me how to do it.
I don't know about that.
Thank you. Thank you for your confidence. I think I could do it. I mean, I'm sure I could run it as the administrator and then, you know, as a secondary administrator, Lisa, and I can, could figure it out. And then I might move that on to somebody else, you know, next spring.
Right.
But just to sort of keep this moving forward, I, I think I can, I can do it. I mean, I can, I do our Facebook, I mean, I do our website now. Add stuff to it and do all that kind of stuff. So I'm sure I can be taught how to do it.
So I guess those are my two things. A second administrator, no commenting. And, and I really wanted to maintain a town professional site.
Well, I think it will, especially with commenting closed. So, but you're willing to allow all events and activities or news that's going out there within the town?
Sure, as long as they're covered equally.
Well, some might post more than others, you know, like our yard would probably have something out there maybe twice a year only. Whereas the schools might have something every day in the town.
The school's always gonna have more stuff. I mean, that's just.
Right, it's the nature of the.
Right. And when I'm saying buried is when there's a town announcement and then in the same 10 minutes or the same hour, there's a school announcement. So it makes the town announcement kind of get buried in there and that's my concern.
Doesn't the school have a Facebook page? Lisa?
Just have Proctor parents.
They do not.
I don't know. How, how do they get their information out to the public?
They have a newsletter.
The school sends out a newsletter to parents.
They don't, they don't use social media?
They have a Twitter feed on their website.
A Twitter feed. Oh, good.
They can, they can tweet.
So is there a motion to go ahead and have Lisa and Greg co-administer this website? Or this Facebook page, sorry, and have it for Proctor Community Events and News Only and shutting off comments?
So moved.
Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, guys. Okay. Green Maple Solar Agreement.
So I finally figured out what that meant, what this, the, the Green Maple Solar Agreement was. So I, I actually reached out to Sam Carlson, who's with Green Lantern, who are sort of the, the parent company to the, the Green Maple Sword. So the way this works, and I've given you a write-up here of what the agreement looks like, and then on the back, what does this mean? So it sort of simplifies how it actually works. But what, what it really means is that, so we produce power, of course, out there at the, at the array. Of those credits, those credits are given a value and, and whenever that, of that value, we get 100%, the Proctor gets 100% of the value of those credits taken off of our Green Mountain Power bills. Now, per the agreement, we actually only get 15% of that. So to make up that 85% difference, we have to cut a check to Green Maple, and that's that check that you see, to basically pay, paying them back that 85% difference. So we're still getting that 15% from the, the use of that. But we have to pay them back the, the 85 because we're, the way it works with Green Mountain Power. So Green Mountain Power, their bills come in, there's a calculation on there that shows us our credits and how much they deducted for our credits in a cash value, which is 100% of that. And then at the end of that, we have to pay back 85%. So that's why we cut a check to Green Maple. It's 85% of the production, the assumed production. And every year that changes. So at the end of the year, there's a true up. They are cutting us a check because we've overpaid during the year or something. That in a nutshell is sort of how this works. So again, the town of Proctor is getting 15% credit for the electricity that's produced out there and not paying anything. We're paying, but we're not actually paying. It's, it's still being produced. So.
Is this costing us money?
No, we're, we're saving money because we're getting that, we're getting that 15% credit against our bills at the end of the day.
We're, we're paying 85%.
But you're, but we're getting 100% to start. So there's three different entities involved. There's the town, there's Green Mountain Power, and there's Green Maple. So we get 100% credit from Green Mountain Power against our bill and then we pay back 85% to Green Maple. So there's still a 15% there that we are getting, net of 15% that we're getting. I know this is totally confusing and I had to ask the guy about four times how to explain it to me, but so we're getting it all through Green Mountain Power 100%. You know, then we're, we're paying back 85%. So there's still that 15% that we're, that's, that is the, uh, the true credit that we're getting in, in value against our electricity bills.
So we're getting a dollar value and then we're paying back 85 cents.
Exactly.
15 cents.
We're paying back 85 cents. Yes.
And then so we're, we're saving 15 cents, basically.
We're saving 15 cents. Yes.
Kind of an odd setup.
It is.
Yes, it does.
Yeah. And it changes every year. So they base it off of this estimated annual savings or the, the monthly service fee. It's based off of how much it actually produces in a year. So every year it can change a little bit.
Right.
Uh, but they, they set that number and then they, so if you see every time we pay Green Maple, it's the same amount for four payments. Uh, but they may be producing more or less depending on the year. That's why there's a true up at the end of the year. And we either get a check, which we typically get a check, or we would pay the difference. So we are, at the end of all this, we are still getting 15% on the dollar or 15 cents on the dollar credit.
Is this a standard statewide agreement?
You know, that I could.
Rutland Town does the same thing. Pittsburgh, they both have large solar.
I, I don't know. I could tell you that Bethel did do something very similar to this, except our credits went directly to the transfer facility, which was right there where the field was at. But it was sort of similar to this. It wasn't exactly like this. So I can definitely look into other places and see how they work this out. But, uh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of convoluted and I, but I don't, I can't tell you, Tom, if it's, if it's the stand, the industry standard or not, I'd have to do some research some other places and see what their contracts look like. But it does, the numbers do work out though. So, you know, you, there is a 15, 15 cents on the dollar credit that we're receiving from this.
Anybody have any other questions on that?
How, how many years does this go on? Does the percentage change?
I have to look through the agreement. When I read it, I don't remember that, that anything changing other than the monthly service fee might change based off the production. But I don't know. I'd have to go get the, I have to find the contract. I can come back to you and let you know if there's a, a, a limit on this. I believe, I believe there was. There was a, an end date to the contract. But I'll have to go back and find the full contract and take a look at it.
What's, you mentioned a service, uh, charge?
Well, they call it the service price. Is that what you're talking about? So there's, yeah, they call it, it's that the service price is the 85% basically. So they're saying that, I guess in a, in a roundabout way, they're charging us 85% to, to service the contract. But it's their field, I believe, and they, they're the ones that are, you know, doing all the crediting on it. But I don't believe there's any other fee involved in here.
Okay.
It says that on the October 31st of each year, shall renew actual annual system output. So that's when they changed the numbers. Now, you know, Tom, I don't have the whole contract in front of me, but I can look at it and see if there's any other fees or what the, what the end date is on it.
Thank you.
And is it, this just, uh, I thought we were involved with one up off the truck route and then the, the one on West Proctor Road. But maybe, could you clarify what site or sites this includes?
Sure. I believe the contract said that it was just for the one out on Proctor Road, but I'll verify that for you.
Thank you.
Anything else with that? I know it's sort of convoluted, but once I got done talking with them, it is kind of, it's a little more simple once we kind of put the numbers to it, I guess.
No more questions or comments. We'll move on to the animal ordinance. Any questions or changes or?
Carrie, did you want to take this one? Or just, she's on mute?
I, I, I thought I was gonna sneeze, but I didn't interrupt everybody with that. I don't really have anything going. I, there was a couple of things that I do not remember that I was talking about adding. And then there was one thing that I didn't add, um, which I had sent a comment back to Tom about, which was the retractable leash, because I don't know how anyone would be able to, um, enforce that. How do you know how many feet it's out, for example? Um, I agree. I think that it gives a little bit more free range to the animal than it probably should have, should. But I didn't know how we would enforce that if it was put in the ordinance.
Yeah. Well, what I meant was, uh, I, I don't think we should even mention retractable leashes. The original ordinance, uh, has under descriptions, uh, there is a leash rule in there. I think we should at least keep that.
I'll have to go.
As of now, leashes are who knows what. What is a leash? Oh, what's the definition of a leash? Is that what you're saying? Yes. There was a definition, you know?
Thought that was in.
In a footage. I, I, maybe I missed it. I didn't see it in the definitions. It is in the old ordinance.
So just, I had pulled, um, the one from Rutland, just to kind of look at that. And they basically say that when, when they reference a dog being at large, that it just, that it has to be under control of the owner or individual, either by leash, cord, chain, or other similar means of physical restraint.
There's no footage, inches of a leash?
No.
Okay, our, our old one had a, a length.
It did?
Yes. I, I think that's, I think that's a good, good thing.
I think if I had, if I had a retractable leash and if somebody approached me, most people would retract it. So the dog is close to them. But if they have a dog walking and he's like six feet out or something, I don't see a problem with that.
No, I, I, I don't either, but I, I see, you know, a problem with a, a leash longer than five feet. I don't think your dog's under your control when your dog is 50 to 100 feet away from you.
No, but retractable, they usually are out like, you know, eight feet maybe.
I see, uh, on South Street daily, way over eight feet, way, way over eight feet. How the dog doesn't wind up out in the road is beyond me. Yeah. I, I think a, a description of a leash that's been in there for years, I.
I'm, I'm looking right now. Leash means an instrument contain, consisting of rope, leather chain, or cord with a fixed clasp on the collar and not to exceed eight feet in length. It is in the old ordinance, Article 2 and Section 4.
And under definitions, yes.
Yes.
I would like to see that in there.
Anybody else have any comments or?
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with Tom. I've seen some, uh, you know, on South Street and, and whatever and you know, if you're, you're out there 50 feet, what have you, you, I don't see how you can really yank it back in that fast.
With, with a small dog, I can understand that, you know, he could be under the owner's control. With a large dog, when you're 50 feet away from Yes. the owner, a, a large dog is not under your control.
How many people on the board have a dog?
I do not.
Anybody?
I don't.
No.
No.
So is there not opposed to dogs? I like dogs. I like dogs. I'm not opposed to dogs.
Uh, when we were growing up, we always had a dog. Yeah.
So does anybody have any other questions or changes to be made or is there a motion to approve the ordinance with the change that Tom recommended?
I, I don't, I just, again, I just have an issue with enforcement and, you know, it happened again and nothing was done. So it, there is a state leash law. So it doesn't bode well to me or feel good to me when the thing is for the resident to let the town manager know and let the select board know and let the sheriff know over and over again for nothing to happen. I have a problem with that. And I don't know is even doing this is going to change that. So I want to ask, what is going to change that? What needs to happen here?
Well, I think, and that's the same, I think, with a lot of ordinances, that the enforcement piece is the tough part on so many. You could have an ordinance say all this, but trying to get it, you know, enforced, even like people picking up after the dogs unless someone's driving by and sees it and can witness it, it's hard to, you know, enforce that.
Even if they do, nothing happens and that's a problem. Even if the dog is loose on camera, nothing happens to the owner. So it, the problem continues to happen and it does not create any confidence between the taxpayers in this town and the sheriff or us or the town manager. I just don't really like that feeling that we get stuck not being able to have something happen, have a consequence. These people clearly have made a choice, but they have had no consequence to their choice. Everybody else has the consequence. but they have had no consequence to their choice. Everybody else has the consequence instead.
So I think, I mean, from reading the report, the sheriff did go to this house and speak to the people. And and I'm not defending him, but I'm just saying there's certain times where if someone sees a dog loose and the sheriff goes there, the sheriff doesn't witness the dog loose because by that time it's already back in the house.
So how many times? How many times do we have to go there?
It's been up. I mean, other than, you know, going there and speaking to obviously, it's like, how do you enforce somebody to keep their dogs in their house when, you know, they refuse to to do that? I I mean, I I can honestly say I don't think from talking to other towns that, you know, loose dogs is not a sheriff or a police officer's biggest thing that they like to attend to.
And and that is exactly why I'm saying we either need a constable or an animal enforcement officer. Because we're not.
Enforcement officer in a town of sixteen hundred people.
Judy, then what's the point of even having this ordinance? Because we cannot enforce it.
Well, we can try to enforce it and talk to the sheriffs. That's why I said we should have.
Cannot enforce this. This has not been even the old one has not been enforced.
Well, I support an animal control officer financially. And we have one loose dog basically all the time. It doesn't support the need for that at all, from my opinion.
It's not just one loose dog and it's not just one incident. It just happens to be that that happened. So I guess my whole point again is why are we even doing a new ordinance when we can't even afford the old ordinance? Who's going to enforce this? We can put this out there, but the sheriff is unwilling to write a ticket or or any of those things. I mean, continuing to speak to somebody about the same thing hasn't done anything.
Have a comment or an idea or?
Did the sheriff issue a ticket, Greg?
No, he came, he went out and talked with, I believe, both individuals and came back to me and we sort of went through what an animal at large, dog at large, actually, what that what defined that. And I interpreted the ordinance for him and told him that if it's off the premises, it's at large and it's not, you know, without a leash. Um, and I had actually asked him to go back out and speak with them after we talked, and I don't think that happened.
The landowner sent a video to to all the select board members. Really showing the dog running at large.
The very next day.
Yeah, so so I have I have a note to call. I didn't get around to it today, but I'm gonna call the sheriff and just find out whatever came of it, because the way it went down was, we got the call, he went out, talked with both people involved, came back and said, well, I think that I need to look at the ordinance and figure out exactly what it says. And I, we looked through it, we got it figured out. Um, basically that, you know, an animal that is without a leash, not under control, off premises is at large. Um, then from there, I was under the understanding he was going to go back out and talk with them again. And, you know, after he had this new information, and I I don't believe that that actually happened after he and I had a discussion. So now, am I carried? Am I wrong, or did anybody hear anything different? The report doesn't say that. Uh, the report says that he made one, I guess.
He did not go back out.
No, this has been a chronic with that dog owner. They just seem to ignore that and I think a fine, a substantial fine is is needed to get them to comply.
Yeah, he said from twelve o'clock to fourteen thirty, so from twelve to two thirty, he was working that case.
Yeah, I have a hard time with that, too.
He talked, I remember he talked to me about one o'clock, one thirty, I believe, because I had just gotten back from lunch. So whether or not he went out, you know, again, I I've I just assumed that once he talked to me and had the understanding of of what the definition meant, that there would be a little more, there would be another step to this. Yeah, but I'll I'll call, I'll give him a call tomorrow. Um, again, we've got, I mean, I'm not a police officer, but I it looks to me like I've got, we got evidence, we've got video evidence, at least something needs to happen, but.
So when he went to speak, you give him like a written warning, right? You just probably gave him a verbal warning?
Well, he came back to me and said, I think that they're both at fault. And I said, well, let's look at the definition here. Because the dog was out front, so they the not the dog that's running around, but the other people, they have theirs out front with an electric with a fence, an underground fence. And he sort of understood or thought that maybe that because they were out front without a fence and no leash, that they were at large as well. He didn't get the premise part, the premises part. So once I sort of clarified things, I I thought he had a better understanding and was gonna go back out. Yeah.
I think this needs to, something needs to be done in this case, because it's been a chronic thing for what, two years at least down there with this particular dog owner.
Well, a lot of these dog owners know nothing's gonna happen.
One, yes. Yeah.
And that's our fault.
Yeah.
And I guess so that that back to enforcement, that's why I'm talking about this, because when you look at section six of this ordinance, the enforcement is a civil matter enforced in the Vermont Judicial Bureau or the Rutland County Superior Court at the election of the select ward or the Rutland County Sheriff's Department. So to me, that's saying the select ward has the authority to issue a ticket.
Have you guys ever seen the book called, I think it's called, the book called Wolf?
I have it.
It's from, it's actually, it sounds, it's a corny name, but it's from the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns. About animal ordinance. And there's certain things that a town, even the city can't do because the state overrides them and has jurisdiction, so um, that just have, that might have some information in it, too, in terms of
Well.
Guidelines.
You know, again, dealing with the sheriff, the the case is not necessarily closed, I don't believe, because we've talked with them before and they said that they have up to so many days or whatever to sort of actively work the case and then they can do a do something after that. So I'll find out tomorrow. I'll get a hold of, uh, this was a different officer that was on. It was Caracus, I'm probably gonna miss, but so, um, and I have a case number, so I can research it and see if anything was done with it and and find out if maybe it's ongoing. I don't know. But I can, I can find out and see if it, see if it went anywhere.
Yeah, I'd like to see something done because it's gonna continue if we don't put our foot down right now.
We pay, we pay an officer forty hours a week. Uh, we're a small town, small population, small area. The town of Clarendon, huge area, larger population than us by far, they pay an officer twenty hours a week. I just don't understand why we don't get much for our forty hours.
I'm with you with that. Ben, did you have, you were gonna say something?
No, I was just agreeing with if we don't continue to stay on this, it it's just, it's not gonna go away. And so, and and I understand now, when Greg told us that he thought the officer said that he thought that they were both at fault because one dog was outside and the other dog was outside. I mean, there are, there are some nuances and logistics to this, but I think the point of the matter is this dog is going on somebody else's property. That's a clear violation of this ordinance.
Yeah. Shouldn't be any question that they get a substantial fine. That's the only thing they're gonna mess with.
So do you want to put this ordinance on hold then, or do you want to approve it still?
I think we ought to hold it.
I mean, I don't know what you're gonna change between now and any other time. It's it's either we go back to the old ordinance and leave it as is.
Well, that's why I'm pointing out that in this ordinance, it does say that the select ward has the authority to issue a fine.
Is it possible to ask a question as a community member during this time?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, the question that I have is, are we able to revoke the owner's license, which puts them out of compliance? And if their animal is bound to be noncompliant, then they would call the animal control and then there would be fines issued from animal control, et cetera. Uh, thank you.
So there, there is no animal control, but control is the sheriff's department at this time in the select board, according to this. And I think the town manager is even in here.
Yeah, the the license, that's an interesting concept. I, the license is a statutory requirement, so I don't know how that would work to revoke that. Um, I I kind of like the concept, but I I'll have to look into it. That's, that's interesting. Yeah. I I think really, I mean, honestly, in a roundabout way, it kind of leads us back to the same the same bridge. Um, it's the enforcement part of it, but it's an interesting idea.
Yeah, I agree. It's just the level, you're still left with the, you know, it carries recommendation to issue a fine, you know, and who goes and is their interest applied to that when it's not paid, you know, et cetera. So that puts it back on to you guys to um, manage that. So, but thank you for, um, thank you for your thoughts and listening.
Thank you.
So Carrie, the only question I have, so the inspection six, it says a violation of this ordinance shall be a civil matter which may be enforced by the Vermont Judicial Bureau or in the Rutland County Superior Court at the election of the select board or Rutland County Sheriff's Department. I don't think that gives us the authority to issue a fine. I think that just allows us to choose them to do it.
Right, which means we would have to take it to the judicial board or the superior court.
Yeah.
The way this is.
What I'm saying is I think we need Alan to to tell us exactly.
How to enforce it.
How the, if if, I mean, if the statute gives us that authority, then that's fine, but I think that's a, that's a question for Alan and most of them totally off base here.
Or the league. Because this is right out of the big book of Wolf, I think it's called. It's this ordinance is right out of that.
I see.
Yeah, so I think the only thing, the only thing that Tom was bringing up was adding the the definition of the leash. Is that right, Tom?
Yes. And so there is a process to this. I'm sure you all know that the ordinance has to go through a a full process. So there's time to make some slight tweaks if you decide to. Uh, there's hearings and all that sort of thing that this ordinance has to go through. Um, so there's plenty of opportunity, I guess, to make slight little revisions to it.
So anyone's thought, do you want to hold off on approving it? Do you want to approve it with the amendment that Tom asked for?
I mean, is there any reason not to approve it without that amendment? Does anybody else want to make any other substantial change? I understand the enforcement part, but that that's that's an interpretation. It's not gonna change the ordinance.
Ag- I agree.
So then I'll move to make the, to to pass the ordinance with the amendment from Tom to add the definition of a leash.
Okay, so second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, so Carrie, can you make that change and get that to me?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, this won't take effect for.
Uh, they're tag, well, so Tom, there is still a process. It has to go. Uh, even though it's a an existing ordinance with some revisions, it'll most likely have to go to a a hearing. So it's a thirty day notice for that.
Thirty days, okay, so we're operating under the old.
We're still under the old, for probably at least the next thirty days to sixty days. Yes.
Perfect. By the way, I I've just been scrambling because I just noticed that the the tragic ordinance wasn't on here. Greg, I sent it to you, but I sent it to your personal email by accident.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I don't ever read that anymore. I'm sorry.
I apologize. I I looked at, I sent it on Friday, but it was, I typed in Greg, it went into to the mag or email.
Okay, um, well, I will, I'll retrieve it and I'll put it on. We okay putting it on the next meeting?
Yes.
I apologize, because I just didn't notice it didn't be the town manager.
Would you share it with us, Greg?
Okay. I will do that. Okay.
Sheriff's report. Any questions on it?
Uh, so I did get clarification as to what COVID protocol was. Um, so they are required, every deputy is required to go to their barracks or wherever they are and do the COVID testing. They do the the temperature test and all that kind of stuff. So what they do is they charge that half an hour or whatever it takes to different, the three different entities. Just sort of however, whatever they go on that day kind of thing, that's who it gets charged to. So that's what that is. That's just the the making sure that they're not without it, you know, to make sure they don't have a temperature and and all that. That's what the COVID protocol is.
Go ahead.
So they have to do it every day.
Every day.
But they bill it to specific towns.
It sounds like they sort of change up where they bill it to, to, I guess, to make it equitable. Uh, that's what I was told. Was that they bill it to different towns. So that, you know, they cover, I don't know how many, two, three towns, whatever it is. Um, but every, every officer is required to go in and and do their head scan and all that every day. And they bill that half an hour to the different entities. And that's her COVID protocol.
Wow.
Yeah, that.
In the same face I'm making, so.
Yeah, no, you know, my other thing is, so we pretty much take their word for it as to these are the times they are in our town. They don't have to be checking in or writing anything. They don't have to do anything. We're just taking their word that these are the times for sure that they're in our town.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, there are no logs other than their, they do this on their computer, but their their, the only log is the the logs that you're seeing. That's the only thing I can reach that I get, are just their their daily logs.
Because I just kind of have to question their for me, there is no way they're in town all these times. There are weeks that you never see a sheriff in this town. So I don't know when exactly they're coming or, or maybe they are, but they're just not to me staying this long. I just can't, I'm having a hard time believing that they're in town this amount of time.
Their dispatcher has got, you know, the records and I guess we have to believe them when they check in with the radio or their computer, they're they're documenting it, so. And I'm sure that that they know where that cruiser is at all times. I'm sure, you know, just like your cell phone, if you've got it in your car, they can pinpoint you if they they do that.
Yeah, I I'm not ready to question
No.
record keeping, but it, that COVID thing just seems a little weird.
Yes, you know, when they come in to work at what their chef, the that that ought to be it and it it can't take more than, I I run in and out of the hospital uh, the past three weeks and that that doesn't take a half an hour. I mean, it's minutes. Couple of minutes, they they do the questioning, they do your temperature and they print out a badge for you. And it's almost instantaneously. More, it can't be more than two minutes.
I don't think it should. I don't think it should be charged to anybody's town. I mean,
No.
That, that's part of COVID protocol.
Yeah. I tend to agree.
It's not like I can go to work ten minutes early and get paid so I can do my COVID stuff.
I actually, when, in reading this, I'm wondering if it's, it looks like if they have a call or they do something and they have to go back to the office to write it up or to do further, um, detail on it, they have to do the COVID check. So that's why it's charged, I think, to us.
Yeah, maybe if they have interaction with, um, a complainant, uh, they probably, uh,
I, that, that, the, the, just, the, what I was told was that it's, it's at the beginning of every shift, we have to do our, our scanning and all that. And we have to go to the office to do that and we just try to put that with, with whatever town we're working in at the time or, or try to make that so that it's as equal as it can be. That was the explanation that I got. Now, it does make some sense that if they have to go back to the office, but I mean, it looks like most of these are like at the beginning at noon, but yeah, who knows where they were at before.
I would agree that, it would make sense if it was because they interacted with somebody. That's, that's just-
Cause there's like on this one, there's like three or four of them, you know?
Yeah, I mean, some of you are right. It does say that, but but they have one here that's a, it's a COVID nineteen protocol and then assist the fire department. So do they have to go get-
Probably have to go to a call.
Go get scanned before they went to the nine one one call?
And now, e- every single half an hour though takes away from the time that they're actually in town.
Case number follow-up. Yeah, so I, again, I'm going off of what I was told. Um, I, I don't know.
So Greg, could you, could you ask for a little further clarification of that?
Sure.
Judy scenario makes sense. Record keeping, I just, it just seems a little strange.
Well, I will ask them.
Thank you.
Protocol. Uh, you know, I have asked him for schedules as well and that just doesn't seem to be something that, I think that's kinda tough to keep anyway because of the, you know, just the inherent nine one one happens and they have to go somewhere else. Um, but I, I did get a schedule probably, um, like the third week I was here or something and I haven't gotten one since, but. First to town. Okay, I will ask him.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Christmas hands.
Yeah, so this is the most important thing on the agenda. So the question was asked, um, by various members of the town, whether or not this is something we were gonna do again this year. So.
I don't need any of them.
I think, I think it's great for employees. I don't want one. I, I think it's, it's great to do it for, for everybody else, so.
I will pass, but, uh, the road crew, uh, you know, you, Greg, uh, the town clerk, uh,
Well, we did purchase ten of them last year. And, um, I see a, somebody, Charlotte's saying something about maybe the food shelves, so I don't know if maybe that's an option here, that, that, the, the hands that the select board have graciously-
I, I think in the past it was done as a courtesy to us to show appreciation for the employees in the town. I'm saying more so just, I know it doesn't save much, but I, I'm willing to pass this, cause-
We've got, um, we've got the three road crew. We've got the two ladies in here.
You, Greg. Yeah, three.
That's, that's six.
Six.
Am I missing anybody?
Did we, did Mary get one?
Oh, maybe, yeah, Mary, I mean.
Did she get one?
Probably.
Okay. So we're looking at seven.
That's fine on me.
I, I'm okay with it.
Uh, it, it's been a tough year for everybody.
All right. Make a motion, let me know what you, how many want me to purchase and-
Is there a motion to approve the purchase of seven hands for Christmas?
So moved.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Anything else? Old or new business? Okay, there's a motion before, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Anything on, uh, the lawn at Eden Avenue?
No, so, um, last time we, or a couple of times we talked ago, we had a thirty day notice. I'll check tomorrow when that date was up. If that is up, then I will get with, um, either the sheriff or whoever's in the ordinance, because every ordinance seems to have a different person that, that kinda go around the tickets, but, um, I will verify if we've met that thirty days and nothing has been done, then we will move forward on abatement of the property. We're talking about the lawn, right?
Yes.
Yes.
It was mowed, though.
No.
Oh, it wasn't mowed? I thought it was.
No.
Cause my eyes are bad.
Will we put a lien on the property for the cost of that?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
So there's a note to go into executive session to discuss these Simons and Town contracts? Or a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.